Welcome to the March 11th, 2025 meeting of the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission. If you're here during the public hearing portion of the agenda, and if you are here to speak, please wait until I have opened the public hearing. And once opened, one person at a time, please come to the podium, speak clearly, giving your name and address so that we can record your information for the record. Then each person will be allowed to speak for three minutes, and we ask you to please only address your comments to the Planning Commission. I now call the meeting to order at one minute after six. Commissioner Cooper, would you please lead us in an invocation and a pledge of allegiance?
Please join me. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on the deliberations tonight. We know that there will be various differences of opinion. We ask you to help all of us to understand each other's perspective and make decisions that are in the best interest of this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please stand and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I appreciate it. We've got the minutes before us of the meeting on February the 11th. Does anybody have any corrections or changes to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, having reviewed the minutes and finding them substantially in accordance with the meeting, I move to approve.
Okay. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, we also have an agenda before us. Does anyone have any corrections or changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as we have presented it. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no public comment tonight for the agenda items, so we'll move directly into new business. The first item up for consideration will be presented by Planner Kelly McGrew.
I'm here to present to you the voluntary annexation of approximately 3.9 acres along the Bobby Hicks Highway for a State Department of Licensing Office with a skills testing The property owner has requested the annexation of this 3.9 acre property along the Bobby Hicks Highway. This parcel is contiguous to the city limit, and if you look, some of the parcel is already been annexed as a part of this. I'm not sure when that happened, but just a fun fact. And the applicant is seeking a zoning assignment of B5, which is Planned Community Business This is the Washington County zoning assignment. It's been assigned B3, which is their general commercial district, and then it's surrounded by their general agricultural district, as well as some medium-density residential in this brown area. So for future land use compatibility, both the future land use map that we currently use, so for 2020, and our draft 2045 future land use map, the B5 zoning assignment is in compliance with both of those maps. And then, just so you all know where we are in the timeline, we're in this sec...oh, there's a star. There we go. We are here, and then we should, you know, move through the timeline if this is approved For the B5 zoning assignment, there's not a concept plan requirement, however, this one was provided for illustrative purposes. And the property owner is here tonight if you do have any questions regarding this concept plan. And then, all applicable agencies have provided comments on the plan of service. And then, this project is expected to be an expense of $290,637 and generate $8,735 for the city, but it is a state project. Staff recommends approval of the zoning assignment and the plan of services. This property is adjacent to the city limits and within the urban growth boundary. The zoning assignment aligns with existing and future districts in the area, and the annexation is supported by our bridge plan policy 1.18, which basically says any property in the urban service area that requests water and sewer that we should annex for that reason. And then, this request will have limited impact on our existing services.
All right, questions for staff?
Kelly, just to clarify, who exact...so the applicant, I know it's listed here as John Davenport?
Yes, sir.
Now, John Davenport is a private individual, private company? Or private individual is not associated with the state? Is that correct?
Correct. And he is right here if you'd like to ask him questions.
Okay, Whitney may jump in.
For an annexation, the property owner has to be...the state law says that the property owner has to annex, so the state could not be the applicant. Like, they would later file any type of commercial site plan, but the annexation itself needs to be filed by the property owner.
So who is going to own the property once the property is developed?
That might be a better question for the applicant.
Okay.
Could we hold that question? Sir, would you mind giving us just a few minutes? Let's finish discussing this with staff. I think there may be some other staff questions. We'll bring you up during public comment. If you don't mind waiting for just a moment, please. I apologize. Water and sewer, can you help me understand where we're actually having to run extensions to create the connection for water and sewer that's going to incur that cost?
Absolutely, Chairman Dagenhart. The way this property is situated, it's kind of at a high point along Bobby Hicks. You don't really notice it, but it actually drains, can drain to the north, or it can drain to the south. We've evaluated both directions, and it appears that the draining to the north is the most desirable because of numerous obstacles to the south. Also, it would open up service to a neighboring business that doesn't have service now. But if you know where the electrical substation is, approximately right here, and there's a bridge, I believe there's a creek there if I'm not mistaken, that's where the existing sewer is, and it would have to be extended approximately 750 feet to the south along Bobby Hicks Highway. And that's where it's planned to drain.
So the service will actually service more than this lot?
It would enable service to...I believe it's H-Tech Automotive and the neighboring property, which is already in the city. However, I think it's going to be the retention of pond that was shown on the previous site plan there. So it would indeed serve more than just this property.
So it's a simple line extension?
Yes.
Would those additional properties be required to connect?
That's something we'd have to work out internally. That is an interesting question. Once it becomes available, can we require annexation if the other property that's outside the city wants to connect? That's something we would have to work out internally. We don't...well, they have a...the way it is now, if you've got service available in the county, it's available. You can connect.
And that probably answers a follow-up question I would have, which would be, you know, but for this development, would we be building this stretch of sewer?
No.
Okay.
We would not.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now, at this point, I'll open the floor for public comment, sir. If you don't mind coming back to the podium, and please give us your name and address. I apologize for asking you to hold for a minute.
Mr. Chairman, John Davenport, 494 McGee Street in Jolicoe, Tennessee, 37762. I will be...I'm the property owner, but I'll also be the developer for the state and basically the state. I'm doing a build-to-suit for them for this project, so it's a combination of your personal driver's license, plus they'll also be doing commercial driver's license testing on-site, which is basically an area, rather large, paved, just like they have...it's here now. They'll just be relocating to this spot once we get it constructed. So I think Mr. Cox leases to them now over here on the other side of the interstate. But they...the state has asked...they definitely want sewer service, so they have, you know, they're willing...in their bid, they agreed to provide for the issuance of city taxes, so it won't be exempt, you know, for that. What's in the bid packet includes county and city property taxes at this point, so...
So you will be leasing to the city?
Correct.
And the city will be paying taxes?
Yeah, I'll be leasing to the state.
Sorry, the state will be paying, in essence, you will be paying property taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just an RLP on behalf of the state. There are several bidders. Yeah. It's a pretty standard lease.
Yes, that would be standard. I think what had a couple of us confused is that we were showing, no, our financial analysis shows zero property tax contribution to it.
Oh, okay.
Hence the $294 and only $8,000 in revenue, which is incorrect.
Right. So no, there will be city taxes paid out of the...once we get it constructed.
City and county.
Correct.
And how much will those be?
I'm not sure. It'll just be based off the final appraisal or the evaluation by the county.
Property valuation.
Correct, yeah. I'm not sure.
What timeline do you anticipate?
Of course, they're ready to be open yesterday, but I would say we're kind of waiting...the plans are drawn. Just based off the annexation, we're hoping to get...we're hoping to break ground maybe by 1st of May. We're thinking about 11 to 12 months construction period, so...
12 to 18 months.
Yeah, I think they...they're anticipating...kind of their date they want to be open is by April 1st of 2027 is the latest date that they will take. But obviously, if we deliver it earlier, they'll take it earlier, so...
The drivers' course, there's a portion of the property that will be dedicated to actually a testing ground for CDL drivers licenses, is that correct?
Just for the trucks, yes.
Will that access be off of Bobby Hicks, or will there be multiple access points?
Just Bobby Hicks.
Okay.
And they do not only trucks, they do buses, you know, bus drivers, you know, bucket trucks, that kind of thing. I think they anticipate...the way their schedule is, they do about six of those a day is all they can accommodate, because it's rather lengthy tests, my understanding, so...
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Other questions for staff or discussion amongst us? Any other questions, any other comments from the floor? I'm sorry, I forgot to ask. Not seeing any, I'll close the floor for public comment. Excuse me, Commissioner Dutton.
I'd love to know what the property taxes will be.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a way to...
I can give the clients...I didn't have that information, so I can give the clients that.
And I think that's...and I think for us anyway, from a sense of comfort, it's always nice to, you know, when we're committing to extend a line, sanitary line, we're committing to expend $300,000, it'd be just nice to know from a comfort perspective that that's within a payback period, a reasonable payback period based on property taxes.
Any other comments? We could defer till next month?
That's what I would recommend.
And get the financial review corrected?
Yeah, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that at least the finances are halfway reasonable.
All right.
I would second that motion if you...
So is that made of the motion?
It's a motion.
And a second? Discussion about the motion to defer the question until next month after we've received a financial analysis that's been corrected?
It does...it seems...I'm not really clear on...I mean, I understand what you're saying is, you know, there are enough taxes to justify the extension or the expense of it, but I think the gentleman said that they can't determine the taxes until they have a final appraisal on the project. I don't know how one month is going to change that.
Oh, I think they can. I think they can come up with a pretty good estimate, Steve.
I mean, he's cut a deal with the state, so he's got a pretty good idea of what he's going to spend.
Yeah. I think we can get...I think we can get close. We're used to seeing...I mean, the cost-benefit analysis normally includes an assumption for property taxes, though.
Well, if we know what that is in general, we could probably estimate it right now.
I think it's for staff to do that, not for us to do it from the floor. Any other discussion about the motion? I'll call the question. Would you please call the roll, please, on the motion to defer this matter until we receive an updated financial analysis to the meeting, to the regular commission meeting on the second Tuesday of April?
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
No.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Let's move to the next item on the agenda. I think Ms. Putney, I think you're presenting this. Are you going to present it from downstairs, down below?
I'm going to present the item from down below, this one, and then come back for a discussion and everything else.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is a preliminary plat approval for a two-lot subdivision off of Mockingbird Lane. To get oriented with the property, the parcel in question is zoned R5. The movie theater is...it's right behind the movie theater, and the mall is to the slight northeast to the property. So it's these, this two properties right here. The request is for two lots, so the two lots are really divided by the new public road that will be built to local standards. Sidewalks will be on both sides of that public road, as well as along Mockingbird Lane, along the extension of the public frontage off of Mockingbird Lane. Open space, they're providing walking trails, a pavilion and picnic area, and utilities are already serviced. There's no rezoning for this request. There's no rezoning for this request, so utilities are already kind of in place and ready to go for the 210 proposed apartment units that will be on-site. So super simple, it's a preliminary plat approval. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat due to it meeting the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, local roads, and sidewalk standards.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Ms. Putney? Could you stay down there for just a moment and call up the preliminary plat diagram for me, please?
Sure.
Y'all need to go back and forth.
I'm trying to get clear in my mind where...I think I see parking spaces designated on this plat, but I can't figure out where the buildings are going to be.
So as of right now, this is...it's not a site plan, so the buildings...we do have a proposal, but the buildings aren't set. But the buildings will be...there's seven buildings total, and they will be...there's two that are going to front Mockingbird, two along the rear here, two along here, I believe, if I remember correctly. This parking is an existing parking lot.
Ah.
So that's not...it's going to be utilized, but it's existing.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
So where is the hotel? Is the hotel adjacent or the office building?
The movie theater.
The...is that behind the...
This is...sorry.
That's where it is.
Yeah, the air zone.
So it's just a street. There's tiebreakers is here, in the movie theater, yeah? So it's right behind that movie theater.
So that parking garage, or that parking lot?
The parking lot is...
Right.
It's part of the movie theater.
Oh, it is, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it adjoins...that's the parking that you're looking at right there. That's on that plat.
The hotel is down there.
Yeah, okay.
So this is, in fact, a subdivision of the property into two lots separated by the newly constructed road that's on the diagram?
That's what makes it a preliminary plat.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't believe we have public comments on preliminary plats, so I'll take questions for the discussion amongst the commission.
And there's no zoning change, it's already zoned R4, correct?
It's currently zoned R5, yes.
I mean, R5.
Thank you. By the way, I can exit out and get to my next one.
So any discussion amongst the commission?
Looking at the map, you know, in this corridor, this really seems like this development kind of completes the picture of potential expansion. I think it's a good use of the infill that we have available to us, and I think it's an appropriate space for density. So while I crave seeing the site plan just to see what it would look like, I do think that this is an appropriate land use.
And so I will turn that into a motion, so I will make a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented, and a second. Any further discussion? Would you please call the roll, Ms. Putney?
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, our next item is also Ms. Putney's. It's the Matterhorn Club Lot Subdivision Preliminary Plat.
And I will be presenting from up here if that is...
Perfectly fine, thank you. You wear two hats this evening.
So this might look a little familiar to the Planning Commission. We...it is a preliminary plat approval for eight...excuse me, nine single-family lots off of Country Club Court. So last planning commission in February, you recommended the concept plan approval or concept plan amendment to the city commission, and that has since been approved. So now they have begun the actual subdivision, construction plan, and final plat process. So this is the request for the nine single-family lots off of Country Club Court. The driveways, there's no new road being created. There will be an additional 10-foot right-of-way provided and widening of Country Club Court to bring it up to standards, and that will happen on the development side, not on the side of Lyons Park, of city property. And a sidewalk will be in place along the development side of Country Club Court. The lots meet the minimum lot square footage of 7,000 square feet. Zone is R4, so there's no zoning change, and it meets the, like I said, the sidewalk requirements, lot width, depth ratio, and proposed setbacks for their housing plans. Due to the preliminary plat meeting the subdivision ordinance, staff recommends approval.
All right, any questions for staff?
The developer is paying for the widening of that road, correct?
Yes, yes.
And this plat is binding, is that correct?
The plat itself is binding due to the concept plan that was previously approved by the Planning Commission.
Right. Thank you. Further questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this subdivision preliminary plat on Country Club Court.
I'll second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Matterhorn Club Lot Subdivision. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. All right, we have a right-of-way abandonment on Circle Court is the next item on the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Uvey.
How are you, sir?
Very good to see you.
Good to see you all.
I'll go through the presentation and then turn that one over to you.
Okay.
This is a complete right-of-way abandonment on Circle Court, kind of orienting us again, Circle Court, Eddie Williams Road. There we go. Eddie Williams Road is here, so that is where we are located, and Circle Court is along, kind of adjoins Fairview off of Steel Street, and it is the entire length of Circle Court for future development. We sent it out to all internal and external agencies, Gas, Natural Grasp, Bright Ridge, all of the agencies that would potentially require an easement. None had any issue. We are retaining a public sewer easement along the width of the existing right-of-way in order for any of those lines to still be maintained. Staff recommends approval of the right-of-way, and I do have a proposed site plan if the commission would like to see what it would look like, because they're using Circle Court for parking for the new redevelopment of the Fairview Housing Project. So that is...this is not binding, it can change, but Circle Court would be right in this area, so it would just now be parking for the units.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rhodey. Please go ahead.
Uvey Rhodey, 123 Lambert Road, Johnson City. This is a project that Johnson City Housing Authority is doing. We're tearing down a bunch of old buildings that were built in the '50s. You probably see them going down Fairview. So this will be four new buildings, similar to what we did at Dunbar across from Science Hill, three-story buildings, 96 units. The acreage works out fine. The abandonment is .67 acres, and of course, it'll be reused again for parking and driveway. I am Sam Edwards here, who's the director of the Housing Authority for questions also, so I'm open to any comments.
Any other questions?
No questions, just a general comment. I drive past this site quite frequently.
Yeah.
I'm so pleased to see that it's getting...
It's about time it's changed, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a long process. I think eventually we'll be redoing Keystone also and trying to upgrade all of the units for not-so-fortunate people. Currently, we have one 10...another 10-unit project on Myrtle Street. We're doing an opening on that. So we're doing small projects too, but these bigger ones are much more effective.
We can't get this built fast enough, I think.
Big pardon?
We cannot get this thing built fast enough.
Right. It'll be a while, it'll be fall before we get it fully funded, I'm sure.
This may be a staff question, but is there some portion of the easement that's remaining for sanitary purposes?
Well, all the sanitary line's going to be redone anyway with new easements, even though we have an easement that is in existence, it's not being used, but it's available, and will stay that way until the new lines get in.
Okay, so we'll see an easement, a new easement, if you will.
The new civil plans will have new easements on them.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey, very much. Thank you for your contribution to the community.
Thank you, sir.
We're very fortunate to have you. So retroactively, I'm going to open the floor for comments in case anybody else wants to speak to it. I see Travis coming forward. I see Travis coming forward.
Sorry, it's not likely to speak twice at the same meeting.
Are you speaking as a citizen or as staff?
As staff.
Okay.
I would just ask, in any of your motions that you include specifically that the action is, you would be retaining the public sewer easement? Just to make that clear.
Okay.
For protocol.
Thank you very much for that reminder.
So that means the subsequent, the ultimate plan will only require easement for sewer. Water and all those other utilities will be.
Mr. Rhodey, would you please come to the mic so we can talk about this?
There currently, there currently power easement's also on it, and they'll be redistributed as the new lines are distributed. So whatever easements are required will be part of the civil package and be recorded. But you can't do that until you actually install them.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the floor, from the public? I'll close those public comments. All right, any further questions for staff or discussions amongst us?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the abandonment of the existing easement at the Fairview property.
The abandonment of the right-of-way?
Right-of-way.
And maintain the sewer easement, is that correct?
Subsequent to retention.
Of the sewer easement.
For the sewer.
Do we need to do power, too?
No.
Just sewer.
It's going to be different, apparently, this particular easement.
All right, do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, now discussion about the motion. So the motion is to approve the right-of-way abandonment on Circle Court and retain the sewer easement as it currently exists?
Yes.
All right, seeing no other discussion, I'll ask for the roll to be called.
Commissioner Aldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Dutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Dagenhart?
Yes. Thank you very much. And our last item on the agenda is an administrative issue for our commission, and that's to elect officers for the upcoming year. So we have the Office of Chair of the Commission, Vice Chair of the Commission, Secretary of the Commission, and Assistant Secretary. Those are the four seats to be filled. So I'll open the floor for any nominations for Chair for the upcoming year.
I'd like to nominate Chris Dagenhart for the Chair.
Sexy.
All right, I have a nomination for myself to serve as Chair again for the next year in a second. Are there any other nominations? I will accept the nomination. Seeing no other nominations being made, I'll close the floor for nominations for Chair. All in favor of Mr. Dagenhart serving again for as Chair of the Planning Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I'll open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Ben Dutton for Vice Chair.
Circle.
All right, I have a nomination for Ben Dutton for Vice Chair in a second. Mr. Dutton, will you serve if you're elected?
I will.
All right, any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the floor for nominations for Vice Chair. All in favor of Mr. Dutton serving as Vice Chair, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So you'll serve as Vice Chair for the coming year?
Yes, sir.
We need a secretary to serve for the upcoming year. Open the floor for nominations for Secretary.
Somebody else. I'd like to nominate Bob Cooper for Secretary.
Second.
All right, I have a nomination for Mr. Bob Cooper to act as Secretary for the Commission for the upcoming year in a second. Mr. Cooper, would you accept that nomination?
I will.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the floor for nominations for Secretary. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we need to fill the seat of Assistant Secretary. I'll open the floor for nominations for Assistant Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Kelly.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a nomination and a second for Laura Kelly to serve as Assistant Secretary. Ms. Kelly, would you accept that nomination?
I will.
Thank you very much. Any other nominations for Assistant Secretary? I'll close the floor for nominations for Assistant Secretary, and all in favor of Laura Kelly serving as Assistant Secretary, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that handles that item. Does anyone else have any agenda items or matters to come before us this evening? We adjourned at 6:35. Thank you very much, everyone.